My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. It's always no gavel here tonight. So I just got a knock on the table. Pardon. That's all right, Joe. All right. So just real quick, I believe I forgot to read this last time, but as a reminder, this meeting of the Board of the Select Board will be held in person, and the location provided on this notice, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting, but please note that while an option for attendance is being provided as a courtesy of the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public will participate. Thank you. And any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. And then member Espojo is with us tonight, virtually, so we will be taking all votes by roll call. First up, 686, citizens' time. Anybody in the room who would like to come forward and say anything? Sherry, come on down. As a reminder, if anyone doesn't want to speak, please state your name, residence, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you. Sherry Ellis. I am a town meeting member, however, tonight I'm going to speak as a Burlington resident, so three Hickory Lane. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting. I appreciate the fact that this board has elevated time for the public comment at the beginning of the agenda. I also understand that it may not always lead to easy starts to your meetings, but tonight I'd like to address what may appear to be a small matter with regard to this agenda item as it's listed. The intent of choosing this particular language of citizens' time may seem benign, however, the larger impact on many of our Burlington residents may be far different. I'd like to understand if there's a particular reason this board elects to use the term citizen. There are residents of Burlington who are non-citizens, who may feel they have no opportunity to address this board, or worse, feel unwelcome through the very choice of just those words. I'm hoping this is just an oversight and a lack of understanding of the impact of the terminology rather than a deliberate choice. Later in tonight's agenda, there's a report from the Board's Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Subcommittee, and in consideration that this board has worked with that committee and taken on tasks of understanding and becoming more inclusive and equitable, I respectfully ask that this board consider amending the agenda item to read "Public Participation." This ultimately is more in alignment with Town Council's policy of public participation during public meetings, shared earlier this year with the committees and boards. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry. Okay, anybody else? Come on down.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sarah Colley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Seven. I'm looking forward to tonight hearing from the DEI Committee, who's presenting on their findings from this year. I want to thank them for volunteering their time, and I appreciate the Select Board's commitment to the issues of DEI. I came here tonight in support of their work and to encourage you all to keep it going. I have not seen the final report yet, but with the scope of work surrounding diversity, equity, and inclusion, I imagine it would be difficult or impossible to address all of the systemic imbalances that exist in our town in one year's time by a group of volunteers doing this in their off time. Just one issue alone, if you look at the makeup of our elected officials, our town employees, our schoolteachers, et cetera, it doesn't reflect the diversity of our residents. Why is that? You can't force people from marginalized communities to run for office or apply for a town job, but what are the barriers or privileges in place that are contributing to that lack of diversity? What can we do as community members and leaders to engage all of our residents? Maybe the DEI Committee has identified some of those things, but now what actions need to be put in place? That's just one aspect of it, and that's a lot. So this is not just a check-the-box type of thing. We created the committee, they did the research, submitted the report, and the issue's been addressed. It's ongoing, it's complex, and it's important, so I just ask that we continue to do the work. Thank you again to the DEI Committee and to the Select Board for your efforts in this.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, anybody else in the room? No? Anybody online? Just go ahead and raise your hand, because I believe everyone has started the meeting muted. Give everyone a few seconds to find that. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Next up, we have 687, an appointment. Paul, to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As a board, we've had a lot of discussion about succession planning within our departments and about how the town's biggest challenge in the future will be to attract and retain the talent we need to manage the town on an ongoing basis. Over the past several years, we've had to replace multiple high-level positions, and it will continue to be a challenge for us as our department heads age out into retirement. We have gotten great support from the board and the town as a whole, and we will continue to work to cultivate talent within our own departments to be able to step up and assume leadership roles in the future. That brings us to our DPW Superintendent position. As everyone is aware, John Sanchez is set to retire at the end of the year. Several months ago, as we began to discuss the future of this position, we're excited to hear that John felt that we had multiple candidates within the department who were fully capable of becoming DPW Superintendent. Brian White, our Assistant Town Engineer, stepped forward and was interviewed by a committee that included myself, John Denizio, Joanne Faust from Human Resources, Mike Runyon, and Doug Davison from the Ways and Means Committee. I think I speak for all the interview committee members when I say that we all walked away from that interview impressed with Brian and excited for the future of the DPW. And now, a little bit about Brian. Brian is almost a native of Burlington, as he moved here with his family when he was in second grade. He attended Burlington Public Schools and ultimately graduated from Shawshin Technical High School. He then attended UMass Lowell, where he received a Bachelor's of Science in Civil and Environmental Engineering, which he then followed up with a Master of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in Construction Management from Northeastern University. Brian is a licensed professional engineer by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which is not a small accomplishment, and he has taken the time to obtain two important water distribution licenses, also from the state, the D-3 and the D-4 license. Brian has also looked to develop his leadership skills and has achieved a certificate in supervisory leadership from UMass, as well as a certificate in local government leadership from Suffolk University. While in college, Brian worked as an intern in our engineering department. Upon graduation from college, Brian worked briefly in the private sector and also as the Assistant Town Engineer for the Town of Wilmington. Burlington was able to steal Brian back as our Assistant Town Engineer in 2008, and he has held that position for approximately the last 14 years. Brian and his wife Tara are residents of Billerica, where they are raising their two daughters, Zoe and Kayla. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I am pleased to appoint Brian R. White to the position of Director of Public Works in the Town of Burlington and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
Okay, motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote. Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Teggus.
Yes.
Yes, sir. Espojo.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, 5-0-0. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, I think Brian may have a few words.
Yeah, of course. Brian, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'll make this quick. It's an honor for me to be here, to accept this position tonight. I'm extremely grateful to the administration and to the board for giving me this opportunity and having faith in me. There's not a lot of people that can say they've had the opportunity to serve a community they feel so connected to, but I can fortunately say that I'm one of them. As Paul mentioned, I moved to Burlington when I was seven, lived most of my life here. I have family and friends that still live and work in town. From a professional standpoint, I've been here almost 20 years if you include the internship, so I really look forward to contributing to the community in this new role. It's been easy working here for this long because of how professional this town is and how well it's run. I'd like to take a quick moment to point out a couple of people that have played a big role in my professional and personal development. Town Engineer, Tom Hayes, was my boss for nearly 20 years, starting when I was in my late teens. During the more formative years of my life, he always pushed for personal and professional development. His door was always open, and he made it real easy to ask questions, except for a couple stupid, really stupid questions, but fortunately I'll get to work close with him moving forward. I also wouldn't be here without the mentorship and support of the vacating DPW Director, John Sanchez. Over and over, he was insistent on me asking questions to pass along all the knowledge he has. He's done an amazing job in our time together, passing along that knowledge, guidance, and direction possible to help me succeed and for the town to be in the best situation moving forward. I can see how much pride he has for the town, and it's going to be difficult to follow in his footsteps. There's really so many people that have helped me along the way that I could add to this list, including everyone here from DPW. It's humbling, and very much appreciated. Thank you for being here. I also want to thank my wife and kids for their support, which I know isn't always easy. Spending additional time at work or attaining further education, I know, is difficult to balancing at home life. But most importantly, again, I want to thank everyone for this opportunity from the board and the administration. I'll try my hardest to live up to expectations, and those are the residents.
Thank you, Brian. Would anyone on the board like to say anything? Mike?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, I've had the opportunity to work with Brian on a couple of projects, specifically in the cemetery, and it was always a pleasure working with Brian. He's a great listener, number one, and he's very creative. I think we had a few roadblocks we had to work around, and Brian was able to navigate those roadblocks rather easily, and I think we ended up with a great product down there in a couple of different instances, and I'm confident that Brian's going to do a great job leading that department for the next several years, so good luck to you, my friend.
Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I say? Congratulations. You've come a long way since giving me 20 push-ups on the field 40 years ago, 30 years ago, whatever it was. I wanted to have you give me 20 in front of everybody, but we let that slide. I don't think we could have picked a better person. At least your support staff is right there. Look at them, I can't believe they're all here. Even retired guys came out, so you must have done something right, and I look forward to going forward and doing the best we can for this town. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Brian is the consummate professional, both on the personal level and at work. The conversations I've had with him over the years have been just... I have the utmost respect for him. I do think it's kind of ironic that when our water issues get solved, you'll probably be getting all the credit for it, because you're coming in, and then the water will get solved, and everybody's going to love Brian, so... But, no, again, like Mr. Sagarino said, succession plan, when we have the talent in-house, it's amazing, the quality of the talent, like the next man up mentality, it's just, it's great to have that.
Mike, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had limited interaction with Brian, but I've been very impressed every time, and I know he has some big issues to fill with John leaving, but I'm very excited to see all the great things he's going to do for the town, so congrats, Brian, can't wait to work with you and see all the great things you'll do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, that's it for now. So we'll see you... When does he officially start?
Yesterday.
Is he doing the next two? January, John.
Oh, I don't know.
January 2nd, but he's up for the next agenda item, so...
Oh, so you're sticking around?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Oh, yeah, do you want to get a picture with your wife? You can come up with a seal. Real quick?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Go ahead, Ellen.
Yeah. Those cute pumpkins.
Nobody wants to date. Could you?
You guys want to get behind? Take one of the family, then.
Can you stay right there? Now?
This is a gun.
Say cheese.
All right, you guys watch every group, Mr. One. Come on, real quick. Take one of the side, then you should go do it. Come on, Paul, you never get it. Just work this one. All right, Brian, take it away. Moving to 688, got some more appointments.
All right, the first recommendation for appointment, we will be having a vacancy coming up at the end of the year as well with the Superintendent of Central Maintenance. Tommy Lee, the current Superintendent, has been the Superintendent for the last 11-plus years and has, will have 35-plus years of service with the Town of Burlington. So this is obviously going to be a big loss for the town, but well-deserved for Tommy. Tommy was, you know, true professional, hard worker, dedicated, approachable, great mentor, and so he's going to be missed. So John and I completed interviews last week. After review of qualifications, I'm recommending Mr. Michael DeSimone for this position. Mr. DeSimone has been working with the Town of Burlington since 2016, currently as a pump station operator, and before that, a special equipment operator. Prior to joining the Town of Burlington, Mike started his career as a mechanic. He worked as a mechanic in a supervisory role for six years at Stevens Auto Repair. His role at the repair shop included administrative business responsibilities related to operating the business, as well as typical duties of a mechanic in diagnosing and repairing gas and diesel cars, trucks, and equipment, and will work to suit for this role. Mr. DeSimone graduated from the Automotive Repair Shop at Shawshin Tech High School and went on to receive an Associate Degree in Business Management. He holds an Emergency Vehicle Technician Certification, a Class A CDL License, and a 2A, 1B, 4E, and 4G Hoisting License. I believe Mike is in the audience. Yep. So that's our recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And with Brian's recommendation, I appoint Michael DeSimone to the position of Superintendent of Central Maintenance in the Burlington DPW and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
I'm moved. Seconded. Okay, motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call. Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Teggus.
Yes.
Mr. Espojo.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, 5-0-0. White, number two.
Yes. So next recommendation is a vacancy in our water treatment plant for our water treatment plant operator. This position has been vacant for some time now. Fortunately for us, we got a great applicant. We conducted, John and I and Russ Mackey, Water Treatment Plant Manager, conducted interviews. Based on the interviews, we're recommending Mr. Jeffrey Coller for the position of Water Treatment Plant Operator. Mr. Coller has over eight years of experience working as a water treatment plant operator for the Pittsburgh Water Department and possesses a Grade T3 Water Treatment License, as well as a Grade D2 Distribution License. We think Mr. Coller would be a great fit.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Chairman, with Brian's recommendation, I appoint Jeffrey Coller to the position of Water Treatment Plant Operator in the Burlington DPW and ask that the board waive its 15-day waiting period.
I'm moved. Seconded. Okay, moved and seconded. Roll call. Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Teggus.
Yes.
Mr. Espojo.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, 5-0-0. Congratulations. Yes, sir.
Jeff, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Feel free.
I have an email that's going out today.
Hey, Tom. Tommy Lee.
I'm late.
Tommy Lee.
Tommy Lee. Stick around, don't go anywhere yet. Come here.
Come on, just for a minute. Go ahead. Tommy Lee, in the background there quietly, I just wanted to say thank you, Tom, for 35 years' service to the Town of Burlington. It's been a pleasure to get to know you and look forward to getting together with you after work.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Well, you're lucky, Sal.
Thank you.
I think we should have a talk late night.
Yeah, we can do that.
I really do.
35 years ain't nothing.
Just crushed it. Crushed it.
All right, moving right along to 689, we have an approval for Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund. You have a whole gang.
You've got a gang. Gang of three.
I suddenly feel a recess coming on, right there.
I do want to thank the chair for putting me before the end of the meeting, like the previous chair. Good evening to the board. Paul Tierney, Marge Yipman, and myself are here tonight to discuss the membership needed for the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. As you recall, in May, Town Meeting voted in the affirmative to accept Massachusetts General Law Chapter 60, Section 3D, in order to authorize the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund. So we've... Paul, Marge, and myself have gotten together a few times to discuss the formation of this committee. We looked at what the article called for, and we just want to talk a bit about some of the makeup and why we're asking you tonight to solicit and bring on three members to the committee. I don't know, Paul, if you want to just talk a bit about...
Yeah, so the provisions of the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund state that someone from the Assessors Office, Treasurer Collector, and three members of the public that the Select Board appoints to form a committee to act and disperse any funds that we potentially receive from the public regarding this fund, and we review all the applications with that committee and make our decisions from there. Hopefully, we'd like to have this up and running for this year, have applications due by the end of January, and that so we can make our decision sometime in February and have the, grant these funds for the fourth quarter bill. That's our goal right now.
Marge is imperative to this operation and...
A little closer. So the social workers will be the ones that will help people fill out the applications and get their paperwork together, and then we'll go from there. But they'll also be spreading the word to all the seniors that they see and do home visits with. They'll be the ones that really know who qualifies, at least of the over 60 set for the program.
I mean, similar to some of the exemptions now, there are some income limitations, so there's a lot of information that has to be gathered. Marge and her staff are the most qualified to do that, and so at the same time, you know, with Paul identifying with exemptions, we want to, that's why we need these three people, we want to get involved, get this moving, as Paul mentioned, as soon as we can, and we're looking forward. What's going to happen is, similar to the Scholarship Committee right now, there'll be a little check-off box on the tax bill where they'll have the opportunity, if they want to make a donation, it's a tear-off, basically, mailed into the Treasurer Collector's Office for the scholarship and this fund also. So we'll maintain a separate fund, and we'll determine based on those contributions how, where we can disperse the funds, but we need, we do need the group to finalize some of the processes as we go forward. Paul and Marge have done a great job of putting together some of the criteria, we just want to make sure we do it in the correct manner. We're here tonight asking you to, the board, to solicit and get us three members who are interested.
Okay. Gentlemen, questions? Jim, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there any particular target group you're looking for for this committee? In other words, someone who's not currently on an elected board or an appointed board, or someone... Can that person be on a current board and on this board?
I don't see why not. Provisions that would state that you, that couldn't be the case, so whoever's most willing to do it, and in your opinion, it would be most helpful to us, would be perfect.
That's all, my only question.
People always say, people that are busy will always get busier because they're volunteer more, so... But either ways...
I just wanted to avoid any sort of conflict if someone was, say, for example, a member of the Board of Assessors, could they also sit on this as well? So I want to make sure that there's not going to be any conflict. Thank you.
Mike?
I guess my only question, is there any specific skill set you're interested in for volunteers, or are you just looking for someone with a big heart and open mind?
Well, there's organizational skills, there's also, I guess there would be marketing of the program, it's going to be brand-new. We have, I look at the scholarship group, they're out there, interactively soliciting contributions, and we do get them into the Collector's Office, and then they determine who we're going to get those scholarships, and they tend to do, they do their job quietly and effectively, and I think that's what we're looking for, is just some people to help us along the way. If I had to look at for talent, I'd say someone who has, can market it. Market the program.
Okay, great.
Yeah, finding the people who qualify for the program is the easy part, getting, you know, getting folks to donate and getting the funds for it is the more difficult side.
Yeah, I bet. Okay, I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Joe? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a real, a couple of quick questions, I guess, timeframe. You're looking at a year-round position for someone to sit on this board with you. When I say year-round, I mean monthly meetings, bi-weekly meetings. How much time does someone have to put in so we can understand what we're actually trying to accomplish and who we're looking for?
I think the front end will be a lot heavier than the rest of it, you know, as we try to get the parameters down and figure out what we're doing, and once we get it rolling, I think that it will be much less.
Just so if we put it out there, we know exactly who's someone, someone who may ask one of us.
I would think that summer and fall would be very light, and it would be more of a kind of a winter-spring lift.
Looking at like once a month type of thing? I guess...
I don't even know if it's that much.
we have everything in order, so when we do move forward, we can make those distributions, and if we do get there, maybe the first ones are smaller, but the ball starts to roll. And we, we just want to make sure we touch the people that can be, can use this fund.
Okay. Yeah, because I figure in a perfect, you know, environment, we're back here on December 12th to handle those appointments, and, you know, that only gives your, your team a month to get really anything done. You mentioned the scholarship committee for the, for the schools, you know, they, from what I understand, they put together a playbook as to how they operate and function in terms of how they double-blind all of the, the applications and go through and, you know, work as a, as a team to kind of cross-check, so it might, you know, behoove this committee to reach out to them and just talk about what their process was, and then how it might be able to be adapted for your own, to save yourselves, you know, some, some upfront legwork, because it's a lot, it's a lot to go through, and to be as, as fair as humanly possible. Yeah, I, you know, it's, it's tough, though, the whole marketing aspect is like the biggest thorn, I think, when it comes to getting information out there, because, I mean, you know, folks who still get their, their tax bill and actually open it, you know, they're tied into their escrow and not really worried about it per se, right, so I kind of factor in that one lump sum they're making on their mortgage, they're not looking at it, you know? So, I mean, you know, it would be great for us to find ways, and I think that there's, there's laws around us using dollars or promoting things that would involve residents giving us money, right, like, we can't do that. Yeah, I see Gary.
And we can't fundraise.
Yeah, fundraise, right, yeah, so, marketing falls under the fundraising category in essence, right, which makes our, our work a lot harder, so, yeah, no, all the power of this committee, I think is great, anything we can do to help residents, you know, is wonderful, so, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say, you can expect to see this group back at either our next meeting or the first one in January. As the board knows, we just set the tax rate at our last meeting, and, you know, whenever we do that, there are always some residents that will have difficulty paying their tax bills. Town of Burlington, through town meeting, has voted, you know, the most generous exemption amounts under law, and I know that this team is constantly looking at ways to, to modify those programs so that we can get more folks eligible to participate in them. So they'll be back at either December or January to talk through all the options that are available, including this new option that they brought to us at the last town meeting, just to get the word out there to residents so that they know what programs may be available if they have difficulty paying their tax bills.
Very good, thank you, Paul.
The last tax bill, we inserted another sheet which talked about method, methodologies of payment on the backside with some of the information, the exemptions. We can put inserts into our, our tax bill, which is informational, as long as it doesn't increase the cost. And that's basically one piece, one eight and a half by 11 piece of paper we used outside, so the town administrator had asked me about that probably about a year ago, we were successful once, and we're going to try to look, look for that as people understand it, so.
Something's better than nothing. All right, so you're looking for an approval from us to solicit four committee members?
Yes, I'm, I'm not sure of...
Paul, I meant four as in, not the number four.
Oh.
But yes, the only three. Good catch, though. Yes, so we're looking for three committee members to be, yeah, okay. All right, well, gentlemen, if there are no other questions, I don't have to motion.
Make a motion to approve the taxation fund committee and solicit three committee members.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, roll call vote, Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Tigges.
Yes.
Mr. Spahoe.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero. There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in. All right, next up, 690, we have the DEI committee's final report. Now, there's some folks here, some folks online, I want to thank the entire committee for making the time tonight to be here.
I'm going to yield the floor to the chair. Dr. Addison Reed, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Our regime Addison Reed. I'd like to introduce the diversity, equity, and inclusion committee.
I'm Dr. Nancy Bonisara.
Carl.
Said, I believe we're looking for...
I mean, there being...
Hi, Carl Foss here.
I don't see. Sorry.
Said.
He should have a request.
Can you guys hear me? Said, on your ear.
Thank you. And of course, Nick.
And myself.
And I'm the chair of the committee. We've submitted a report that is the annual report to the select board. We start by introducing ourselves with background and experience and the work that we've done, and then move on to talk about the first quarterly report that was presented to the select board on the 28th of February. You'll find, along with the presentation of 10 pages, the 14-page report that was given to the select board on the 28th of February, and it's called Appendix A as part of the materials. Going on to the second quarter, that's where we define what is our approach, that's the process, and the words are, the philosophy plus core values, mission, goals, decisions, actions, results, and self-appraisal. And so what we've done by looking at the documents that we presented over the last year was to go through that entire process, and this is an assessment of our own appraisal for how we did with the committee work. On page four, you'll find the definitions of each of those words. On page five in the report, you'll look at the select board mission statement that was restated and voted on Monday, the 11th of April, to accept the new language in their vote. Moving on to page six of the report, we look at the third quarterly report, which the select board developed time with the chairs of the various boards. They are the Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Recreation Commission, School Committee, Town Clerk, Planning Board, and the Library Trustee. We met with each of those groups and talked about their definition of their mission statement. Once we got through looking at what we achieved in this year, then we doubled back to look at what is the process, and we've begun to address philosophy and core values and to focus on mission statement. What's before us is to look at what do we do for diversity, equity, and inclusion, the goals, decisions, actions, results, and self-appraisal. And so what we've done by looking at the documents that we presented over the last year was to go through that entire process, and this is an assessment of our own appraisal for how we did with the committee work. On page four, you'll find the definitions of each of those words. On page five in the report, you'll look at the select board mission statement that was restated and voted on Monday, the 11th of April, to accept the new language in their vote. Moving on to page six of the report, we look at the third quarterly report, which the select board developed time with the chairs of the various boards. They are the Board of Assessors, Board of Health, Recreation Commission, School Committee, Town Clerk, Planning Board, and the Library Trustee. We met with each of those groups and talked about their definition of their mission statement. Once we got through looking at what we achieved in this year, then we doubled back to look at what is the process, and we've begun to address philosophy and core values and to focus on mission statement. What's before us is to look at what do we do for diversity, equity, and inclusion, the goals, decisions, actions, results, and the self-appraisal of each of the boards. You'll find the definition for our approach starting on page eight, that uses the book, Start With Why, and to begin to examine creative ideas for the leaders, and I'll just give you a statement for each of the creative ideas. Creative ideas, as a leader, what is my role and responsibility for the application of diversity, equity, and inclusion philosophy, core values, and mission statements for myself and for the board? The next strategy is, it's a strategy, and here's the statement for the leaders. As a leader, what is my role and responsibility to explore and lead the diversity, equity, and inclusion strategy, so the boards and the town achieve diversity, equity, and inclusion for everyone who lives in this community? The last approach is to look at what is the application for leaders? As a leader, what is my role and responsibility for achieving the application of diversity through classroom education for leaders, professionals, teachers, students, and parents who live and are educated in this town of Burlington? And of course, under each of those paragraphs, we go into further detail as to how that's going to be accomplished. If any of the committee members would like to add a comment, please do so now.
I'll just chime in, so this report can be found in the backup for the select board meeting, so I encourage people who are interested in finding out more to just go there and read through it. We also are always open to comments, if you wanted to email any of us to discuss any of these things. You may have heard that, you know, we're a one-year committee, and coming up, I think the select board will vote on our, you know, status, but I also encourage you to talk to the select board about how you feel about what we've been working on, and we heard from a couple of people earlier about how they support us, and that's, that's helpful and good to hear. It's, it's been an interesting year, I've enjoyed meeting BJ and working with her, and also Said and Carl and Nick, and also with the select board members. We had, I don't think it's mentioned in the report, but we actually did do a workshop with the select board members, and we still have to follow up on that, but those were some great conversations about, and we found out how everybody in this town, our leaders and our committee, were all on the same page, we just want the best for this town. So that's kind of some of the ongoing work. We've also met with the planning board in a similar vein, and as BJ mentioned, we have met with those different boards that were listed and spoken to them about what's DEI and also what, what's your mission statement, and how do you incorporate some of those values into your mission statement and, and how you work with your committee or board or department? And this is all ongoing work. In the, the report, it also lays out some, you know, outlines and details for years two and three, and this is just an ongoing thing, you know, it's, it's about people, it's about the people in our town, it's about learning. I think everybody's in a different stage of their journey, as far as diversity, equity, and inclusion, for some of us, it's a relatively new term, for some of us, it's just the way we've been living our lives, and I think it's just an important thing for our town to take time to work on, and I think if everyone approaches it with an open and welcoming heart and mind, we can get there. So those are just a few of my thoughts.
Thank you.
Let someone else speak now, thanks.
Carl, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to the entire select board for creating this subcommittee a year ago. I'm going to echo a lot of what Nancy and BJ have said, but I feel that there have been a lot of productive conversations and learning opportunities for a whole variety of people across Burlington. Hopefully, the reports that we presented have served as opportunities to highlight the good things that are going on in town in relation to DEI. I also hope that they serve as a snapshot of where we currently stand, but also where we need to go, and the discussions that this, that the DEI committee has had with this board and others, like Nancy said, they need to be ongoing because DEI work is ongoing. There's not really a finish line, and again, while Burlington does do great things, there's also opportunities for reflection and growth. So, yeah, again, thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to future conversations.
Thanks, Carl. Said.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would like to echo what everybody has already said, it's been a great honor and privilege to be able to serve on this committee. We have had wonderful conversations amongst ourselves and with town personnel, town management, the select board, and so many other folks, and, and also want to thank all of the public that has, you know, thanked us for our, for our work and have supported us. There is a lot that needs to be done, we, there is a lot of good work that's being done in Burlington, and there's a lot more that needs to be done to improve our good sound. So looking forward to any questions or comments that may be in the report that we have provided, and also looking forward to further continued support from the select board so that we can continue this work in the years to come. Thank you.
Thanks, Said. BJ, anything else you want to add?
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, I will open it to questions, comments. No, 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 Mr. Spahoe, yeah, I see your hand.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to thank the committee for all the hard work they've done over the past year, I think it's important work, and DEI is something that we all can probably improve on, and I think we as a select board have to kind of get together and discuss how we want to move forward, because I'm looking forward to continuing discussion and our work on this, so, thank you, Detony, for all your hard work. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I do have one thing.
Thanks, Mike. Jim, go.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I also want to thank you and the committee for their work, but one thought, you know, going forward, is with the lack of the DEI director, so to speak, at the school, the high school, the approach may, I'm thinking maybe the approach can be all-encompassing, town and school together, maybe, because there's a void at the schools right now because of the departure of Mr. Forge, so maybe that could be encompassed into the whole DEI realm, should I thought?
Yeah. So, thank you, gentlemen both, and, and my thanks go out to the rest of the committee, the DEI committee. Having the opportunity to serve on this committee has opened my eyes up a lot. This is, this is probably, this isn't just an issue, this isn't a waterman break, this isn't buying a new truck, this is a cultural thing that we're talking about, this is a community thing, and something that involves each of us individually and all of us together. So when you start peeling back that onion, it's a lot, right, it's a lot to think about as an individual person, that's a lot to think about as you consider the ramifications of how we change things for the community, right? And so for me personally, it was, it was an exercise in trying to be as open-minded and understanding as possible, acknowledging that we all come from different backgrounds, we all have different perspectives, and our lives shape those perspectives, right? What I found very, I'll say optimistic, was as members of this committee began to reach out to other boards, you know, people were, people on other boards and committees were interested in engaging in the conversation, right, and the DEI committee found ways to meet them where they are, right, and to begin having those conversations. And so, you know, as the year went on, this became something so much bigger than the select board, which it is, right, because it involves the entirety of the community in their areas of the community that we as a board don't touch, the schools are a great example of that, right? And so, you know, this, this report, these reports, this amalgamation of a year's worth of work from a committee... of work from a committee is a lot. And so I've encouraged everyone to take their time going through it, you know, ask questions, email me, email the committee. We've got one more official meeting, March 30th of the month, but as individuals, I don't think this conversation ever just ends. And we need to decide as a board what we want to see moving forward, right? Jim, to your point, right, is, you know, is there a more specific charge out of the next iteration of this that we'd like to see, right? How, how can we begin to approach this? You know, and I think that we can find a lot of great information within the report, and I think that anything that we can't, we can begin to ask the members of the committee questions and keep that conversation alive, which is the most important thing, is that just because the committee goes away for a month or two as we figure things out, doesn't mean the conversation stops, right? And that's, again, that's the whole point of a subcommittee of a board or a committee, right? Its function is to inform the body, recommendations, information, education, so that we can then make decisions. And I think that this is, this is, you know, that first step toward that. So with that, again, a huge, huge thank you, BJ, Nancy, Carl, Said, for all of your time, your dedication, your commitment to the work. I appreciate it. I know that the members of the board appreciate it, that members of the community have reached out time and again over the last year to extend their understanding of appreciation. And I think that what I would like from this board tonight is just that we vote to accept the report as submitted, and then moving into December, we can continue this conversation and think on what we'd like to see happen next. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the final report for DEI committee as presented tonight.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Tegus.
Yes.
Mr. Espojo.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero to accept the report. Again, huge, huge thank you to the committee. I will see you on the 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, six ninety-one. We've got the AMC Theater.
Yeah, I just, Ryan. Yeah, I just sent him, he should have a request.
Okay. This is Ryan, I know you're on, you're online tonight. Ryan, you're, either you're broken up or, I started to hear.
Testing.
There we go, gotcha. All right, Ryan, take it away.
Yeah, so thank you for your time. My request is really just to be able to open, or rather stay, just for the opening weekend of Avatar, which is on twelve sixteen, remainder of school vacation week.
Sorry, Ryan, you keep cutting in and out. I don't mean to step in, because you were, you were there, we kind of got it, then I lost you, then I got, came on, lost you. So just, I'm just going to jump in just to, you know, keep this moving. So we're looking to extend operating hours of the AMC here in town for the release of the new Avatar movie. We've got three sets of dates, twelve sixteen through twelve eighteen, twelve twenty-three, and then twelve twenty-five through twelve thirty. Saying that the last show was around two AM, guests offsite by two fifteen. Okay, that's all the details that I've got in my backup. Lynn, anything else that I need to, for good there? Right. I mean, Paul?
Yeah, Mr. Jim, I just want to point out that they're just asking to allow the theater to be open later, they're not asking to extend the hours when alcohol is served, so the current rules will still stand during these late openings, just the board were to approve it. And I think it's just to give it more of an opportunity to show the movie and just allow people the time to enjoy the movie, and I don't know if it's a little bit longer than a typical movie or not, but we see these requests from AMC relatively frequently when they have a big movie coming in. And to date, I'm not aware of any issues that we've had from extending these hours, so just, that's all I want to add, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you, Paul. All right, questions to the board, Joe?
No, this is, I've done this with them before, so I don't see any problem with just pulling this right through.
Great. I concur with Mr. Sagarino. Jim?
Ditto.
Ditto. Mr. Espojo, anything?
No, all of a sudden, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, if there are no other questions or comments.
To approve AMC, or extension of two hours on the approved dates, when we go through the dates.
Yeah, for the record of that.
Twelve sixteen to twelve eighteen, twelve twenty-three, twelve twenty-five, and twelve thirty.
Second. Twelve twenty-five to twelve thirty.
Yes. Okay. That was seconded, Jim?
It is.
Right. All right, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero for the extension. Ryan, thanks for coming in, appreciate the patience. Good luck with that microphone.
Moving right along, we've got six ninety-two, approval for Tony C's early opening.
Jim, David, you have your own Tony C's?
Okay. Okay, floor to our sir, go ahead.
So we're asking for ten dates in December to open one hour early at ten AM to show the Round of Sixteen World Cup. We have quite a few international people that come in to see the games when they're on, and we think these games will be a need for people to, you know, come in, take a look at the games. We'd like to serve food, we'd like to serve alcohol, but not, obviously, if it's, if it's not in the board's interest, that's fine for the, for the alcohol, I don't see any problem with not serving alcohol, but that would be the request, to serve alcohol and food one hour early for the, for the ten dates that I've requested.
Okay. All right, thank you. Paul, anything on this?
I have no, no issues with this, Mr. Chairman. Just, it's a little different from the last one, and they are asking for an additional hour on the front end to serve alcohol along with the food.
Okay. And any, just out of the gate, anything with the ABCC on that, or that's just out of our discretion?
You have that in there that says you are allowed to make the extension from eight AM to eleven AM, so there's no problem.
Thank you, Lynn. All right, questions from the board, Joe?
I don't see an issue with this. One hour is going to make a difference to us at all, but to them, it's going to make a huge difference bringing people in. This sport's a very, very big sport, people love to watch it. Some people send emails and text messages on what's going on all the time about it.
Mike, anything? I, I really don't, I'm just actually, to be honest with you, amazed of the enthusiasm everywhere I go about this, this soccer match that's held at B four years, I've sort of not speed on soccer or football, depending on where you've come from.
I have, I have no, I have no issue with the request yet, but I know. Okay, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have an issue with it, but my question is, is this, is this your one vote, or just voting for the alcohol? Because they can open early on their own, right? If I'm not mistaken? Or is it two votes?
It's just one vote.
One vote, sorry. One vote, okay. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Espojo, anything?
No, I just wanted to say that I was excited when I saw this. I've been watching the World Cup, captivated by it, I love it every four years, and I'm hoping that the US Men's National Team will be playing in one of those early open games, the knockout rounds, so hopefully they win tomorrow and we can get to come early and watch them. So I'm full support, I love it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, gentlemen, well, there's a motion. Yeah, Phil, I'm going to make a motion, Tony C's open early, ten AM, December third, fourth, fifth, sixth, ninth, tenth, thirteenth, fourteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. With the approval of alcohol also. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Mr. Tegus.
Yes.
Mr. Espojo.
Yes.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero.
Can we reserve a table?
I think for you guys, we could do that. Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, six ninety-three has been withdrawn, six ninety-four, update, Eversource, work continuation. Anne Marie Walsh, I see you out there, I'll get you the ability to say hi.
Good evening, can you hear me?
We can, good evening.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name's Anne Marie Walsh, and I'm with Eversource, and I cover the town of Burlington. I appeared before this board two weeks ago tonight with regards to work we wanted to do out at Burlington Mall Road at Middlesex Turnpike. Needless to say, we did not complete the work in the time allotted. It turned out that supply chain issues caused us the inability to complete the project. So basically, we were unable to get some fittings, conduit fittings, and the two manholes that needed to be installed. So we just learned, excuse me, we learned today that we expect to have that equipment, but we have the fittings, but we expect to have the manholes the first or second week in January. So we were wondering if we would be able to work after the, after the first of the year to continue that project.
Okay. Paul, for clarification, when does the, I'll call it moratorium on work being done officially come undone? Is that a whole sentence? Sorry, I'm speaking gobbledygook tonight.
I thought it was April fifteenth.
April fifteenth.
Correct. Yeah, she just verified that.
Excellent, all right. Questions, comments from the board? Who wants to start? Jim, go ahead.
Can you just say how long it would take you to, how many days? Just clarify that.
Well, while we were working out there, we ran into some ledge. So basically, we anticipate running into ledge again. We also figure we'll probably encounter at least one weather event, and so we're estimating about five weeks to complete the project.
Five weeks, and then you don't anticipate starting, you're asking to start in January, correct?
Yes, correct. After the first of the year, the holiday season will be behind us.
All right, thank you.
Mike?
Oh, boy. I, I would really like to get input from my DPW people that know more, know a lot more about this than I do. So I really have nothing to add at this point, it's just, until I get some more information from people who know I'm uncomfortable with.
Mr. Chairman, I think I can speak for DPW, I think that they didn't want an extension the last time, so I'm fairly certain, in particular with the fear of a snowstorm, it causes a real problem with the clouds. Certainly, we do have another meeting between now and January, if you want to get an official word from Public Works. And again, who knows, maybe it's one, fingers crossed, it's one of those years we don't have any snow, I'm not sure, but I think it's a, it's a real concern at that later date in January.
Joe?
Deny.
Cutting, cutting right through a ballon.
No sense of saying anything.
Yeah.
I've gone over it three or four times already, and the DPW has already told us they don't want to do it, now they're looking at January to dig up the roads. They won't let a resident do it in January, what makes, start the job earlier. I don't, I'm not trying to be whatever, but that's my opinion.
Mr. Espojo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Walsh, can, can you guys even work for five weeks starting January first? I mean, it's going to be the dead, almost the dead of winter.
Well, over the years, you know, in different communities, we have continued to work throughout the winter, you know, on the electric and gas side, and when we need to, we, you know, fill in the, you know, comply with all the reg, rules and regulations with regards to backfilling, removing the plates, and, but we have done it.
Yeah, I'd be worried about the integrity of the sealing up the road again in the middle of winter, you know, just, just a concern. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Jim, got you to follow up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm having a difficult time to even think about this, because we were told two weeks ago, it would take two weeks, they needed two more weeks to finish, we gave them two weeks, now it's going to be an additional five weeks, so that's seven weeks, and to have the roadway dug up for five weeks in January with plates, with cold patch, I, I just don't think it's in the town's best interest.
I'll play the role of sympathy for a moment. I get it, supply chain issues, time, doing the work, unexpected complications, I mean, you know, I think all of us have gone, you know, a home DIY project, and it's a golf exit real quick, and then we find ourselves, you know, five trips later to Home Depot, and a day and a half later, you know, and it, it happens. Now, that being said, I don't love the idea of the road being open for five weeks in, in January, you know, with all of the, the snow we typically get in January, right? I think, you know, the, it seems seasonally, we've, we've shifted that, you know, all our, all our bad storms start in January, right? And so, you know, that does have me a little concerned. But it is not my job to lay down this hammer and make a single decree, so what I will say is that if this board would like to push this to December for further discussion, to get DPW away on, we could do that. If this board would like to make a motion and vote on it this evening, we can do that as well, but I defer to you, gentlemen. Joe?
Let me jump in for one second, I'm not trying to overrule or overstep, anyway, I should say overrule, but Mr. Sagarino said it earlier tonight, first report from Eversource, DPW didn't want us to continue it at that point.
Yep.
So now, if we continue at this point, we're going against our own DPW's wishes. So I'm going to make a motion that an I am work until springtime.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Roll call vote, Joe?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero, and the affirmative to put a hold on the work until April fifteenth. Ms. Walsh, thanks for coming in, we appreciate your time.
All right, thanks so much, have a great holiday season, everyone.
Thank you too, happy new year.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to subcommittee reports. Joe? Joe?
Nothing? Mike?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a couple of items. I think we're all aware of the outrageous increases in home heating oil, electric prices, natural gas, so on and so forth. It's going to be a real challenge for a lot of homeowners this winter. I just wanted to offer a couple of tips that may be helpful to some, some folks. We have a fuel assistance program that we've had here in Burlington for a number of years. If you're a veteran, you can contact Chris Hanifin at the Veterans Affairs Office. If you're fifty-five or older, you can, you can apply through the Council on Aging. Folks under fifty-five, families can apply with Christine Shubin at our Department of Youth and Family Services, I believe, those are available. The state also has some fuel assistance program. If you can navigate our town website, under the, the housing tab, we have some links to some programs, state programs that are available for you as well. Although kind of late in the game, you know, you've seen the ads on TV with Nancy Kerrigan and so forth about the, the home heating assessments that you can have done. I've done it myself, I've gotten some benefit out of that through additional insulation, so on and so forth. That's the Mass Save Program, so there are some programs out there, and I am very sympathetic with the folks who have to, you know, go through the winter, especially those folks using home heating oil, just ridiculous increases, I don't know how it's, it's allowed. On a, on a more positive note, Saturday afternoon, I intended another one of our local residents attain the rank of Eagle Scout here in Burlington. I don't know how we keep producing these, these young men and women, it's a, it's a very rigorous program that they have to complete to, to achieve that rank, but I was very proud to present a proclamation on behalf of the board to Henry Moran, a local Burlington resident, and listening to some of his accomplishments and some of his goals for the future, I have no doubt, he's a very promising career ahead of him, he's, he's going to college to quantum mathematics or something like that, but he's a, he's a really nice kid, a very, very smart kid, his mom and dad are quite proud of him as well as you might, you might imagine. So I had, I enjoyed myself being out there with, with Henry and his family and the other, the other scouts, and Mr. Espojo, they were, they were sorry they missed you.
Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regarding, with regards to the fire department, they responded to numerous calls this past Thanksgiving, however, the fire chief is pleased to report there were no cooking-related fires or incidents. Firefighter Edgar McLean worked his final shift this past Friday, and all his coworkers wish him a happy and healthy retirement, and today, interviews were held for the position of a And today, interviews were held uh for the position of Assistant Fire Chief. Four candidates who are captains uh who qualified were interviewed uh today. This Sunday, four PM, on the Town Hall Common is the annual holiday tree lighting, which is always a great time. Usually very well attended. And I was busy this past Saturday too, as Selectman Runyon was. I was able to attend Mr. Robert Morocco's one hundredth birthday party. And I gave him, also gave him a proclamation on behalf of the board. And just an amazing gentleman. If you knew his story and his accomplishments, uh just by reading the pro- proclamation, I I learned so much about him. Thank you, Lynn, for your help with that. And that being said, this Friday, December second, in the town of Burlington, will be known as Robert Morocco Day.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. Spahoe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to give kudos to the police department for doing their uh stuffer cruiser toy uh toy drive for uh children of fallen officers. And if anyone still wants to participate, you can drop off a gift at the police station up until, I think, uh December eighth. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I hope everybody had a uh nice Thanksgiving, or at least a long weekend. Uh it gave me a chance to actually take a, take a break and get some, get some rest. Um you know, with uh with all of the uh, as as we head into winter with the cold weather, I I, we always encourage folks. Uh you know, if you have uh, you know, neighbors, especially elderly neighbors, as we get colder and colder into the year, the snow, please check on them. Uh you know, it doesn't take much to, you know, pop next door, pop across the street, make sure your neighbor's doing okay. Uh like Selectman Runyon said, you know, as heating costs, electric costs go up, people, you know, don't necessarily reach out. They choose to lower the temperature in their home, uh thus putting themselves at risk. Uh you know, so please, you know, uh checking on each other is important. Um I had the uh pleasure to attend the, and Jim was there as well, uh the treehouse up at Simon's Park. Uh sorry, super cool. You know, if you, if you haven't had a chance to to check it out, go to Simon's Park, check it out. It is the, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, the second ADA compliant treehouse in New England?
Public.
Public.
Publicly accessible.
Publicly accessible treehouse in New England, uh only to be beaten out for first place by Burlington, Vermont.
Correct.
Uh you know, but uh if you have a chance, check it out. It's a lot of fun. Uh they did a beautiful job with it. Uh and and then just lastly, uh you know, as I, as I often say, uh if you have uh any time, any spare time in your lives, you can make time. Uh you know, performing your civic duty by volunteering for a committee, uh you know, it would be greatly appreciated. Uh you know, this is my, my biweekly shtick. Uh you know, we just approved the solicitation of three uh at-large uh community member uh committee seats. Uh you know, and we need, we need folks to volunteer. So uh if you can take, you know, time out of, I mean, quite literally, it could be once a month. Uh you know, you you tell us what what your availability is, and we can find committees that that fit your schedule. Uh but having the community involved, having a voice, is how we work together uh to continue making Burlington a great place. So please do that. Uh that's my chairman's report. Uh Paul, town administration's report.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh I also just want to piggyback on the uh opening of the treehouse. Um we don't get to talk about recreation issues very often at our board, but uh kudos to our Recreation Commission, uh to Brendan, to Kelly, uh for all the work they do. Um our Recreation Department um is in the lead, um and they're really focused on uh providing recreation opportunities for residents of all ability levels, and um they're constantly thinking of 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 ways to do so. And the fact that the treehouse is universally accessible by all is really impressive, given that it's a treehouse. And and when you go down there to see it, you'll be amazed um just at the craftsmanship that went into that and to make it uh accepts accessible to all children. And uh again, I can't thank Brendan and Kelly and the commission enough for uh all the effort they do, again, to 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 make opportunities available for residents of all ability levels uh for our recreation programming. Uh lastly, uh Mr. Chairman, uh Selectman Tegus was there also today, uh but we're able to attend uh the topping off ceremony for the Broad Institute Lab up up at the Norbloom property on formerly known as Network Drive, but now Blue Sky Drive, and it's really a a cool ceremony where they put the final piece of steel in on the building, and I mean, it's really gonna be impressive. It's really gonna put uh Burlington on the map. Uh we we got to sign the beam before it went up there. Uh a hundred years from now, people will bring the building down and be saying, who the heck are these people that signed this thing? But uh it's actually a really cool thing to do, and uh we're really excited about um um all the positive things that are going on in town uh from an economic development basis. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, gentlemen, if there's nothing else.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Chair votes aye, five zero zero to adjourn. Good night, everybody.